Go ahead and call our meeting to order. We'll do a roll call. Chad Dance.
Yes.
Greg Calder.
Yes.
Paul Jenkins.
Scott Lynch.
Scott Lynch is not going to be here today, and I, Amy Landerson, am here. We need a motion to go ahead and approve our agenda.
So move?
Seconded.
It's been moved by Mr. Dance, seconded by Mr. Jenkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'd like to welcome everybody here for our meeting today, and grateful that we get to be in the school this year. Last year, we had to do this online, and I'll be honest, it made me a lot sad because I actually love coming and seeing what you guys do. Anyway, love being in the schools, and it's just great to be able to be here today, so we're super excited. We're going to go ahead and turn the opportunity over to Mr. Salisbury and Mr. Mills, and let you guys take over from here with our student council.
Thanks for being here today. Heather and I got up and thought we'd get our green stuff on for St. Patrick's Day, and then remembered we didn't have to wear green today. Student council kids have done a great job this year. We're very proud of their efforts. Obviously, it wasn't... Considering everything that happened, so...
Go ahead and call our meeting to order. We'll do a roll call. Chad Dance. Greg Calder. Paul Jenkins. Scott Lynch is not going to be here today, and I, Amy Landerson, here. We need a motion to go ahead and approve our agenda.
So move?
It's been moved by Mr. Dance, seconded by Mr. Jenkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'd like to welcome everybody here for our meeting today and grateful that we get to be in the school this year. Last year, we had to do this online, and I'll be honest, it made me a lot sad because I actually love coming and seeing what you guys do. And anyway, love being in the schools, and it's just great to be able to be here today, so we're super excited. We're going to go ahead and turn the opportunity over to Mr. Salisbury and Mr. Mills and let you guys take over from here with our student council.
Thanks for being here today. Tyler and I got up and thought we'd get our green stuff on for St. Patrick's Day and then remembered we didn't have to wear green today, so. Student council kids have done a great job this year. We're very proud of their efforts. Obviously, it wasn't any... Considering everything that happened, so we're very appreciative of this group and when you see their presentation and some creative things that they've been able to do, I think you'll be impressed and proud to be part of District 93 because of their effort. Big week at Hillcrest, we have accreditation tomorrow, so we've been working on that for the last couple of months. Every five years, as many of you know, a visiting team comes and kind of gives us a grade on how they believe that we were doing as a school with culture, with student learning, and with professional development and district leadership. So they'll be here tomorrow, and we've got all that submitted to them. One thing I did want to share with the board is I forwarded a link to Mary to share with you. And what that is, is just our folder in standard two. And so what standard two is, is all about like teachers' efforts, what they do to improve academics, and then a big focus obviously in District 93 is our PLC culture and our four pillars and how that fits into our school improvement plan. And so if you're, if you have a couple of minutes and you just want to look through some of that, I think that again, you'll be really impressed with our staff and what they've been able to do through COVID. So Tyler, did I miss anything? Alright, so thanks again. I'll turn the time over to our student council kids, and it's a great day to be in there.
Alright, so we are Hillcrest High School Student Council, not all, just some select members, and this is our year in review.
Make sure you introduce yourself and your position when you get started.
Yes, sir. So I'm Demick Hatch. I'm the student body president here at Hillcrest, and so kind of this is just more of an introduction to our year in review. So this year, we really focused on being a lot more service-based within our school. A lot of like activities and stuff that we would normally do was, we weren't able to do because of COVID and restrictions and protocol. And so we kind of turned our focus onto being a lot more service-based within our community and within our school and kind of helping boost the school spirit within, like within our own school and by serving each other because we thought, you know, if we can't do activities, we can do a lot of service, you know, behind the scenes where we can stay safe with our masks on. It's none of this like big group gathering, but you know, a lot of like what you don't see behind the curtain. And that's what you're going to see throughout our presentation is us focusing on community and serving one another within the school and within schools surrounding us. And then we came across this quote this year, and we thought it was really good. So it reads, "The pessimist complains about the wind, the optimist expects the wind to change, and the leader adjusts the sails," by John Maxwell. And we thought that was really good. It really applied to us with, you know, the metaphorical wind that COVID is and just adjusting our sails in order to make this year as good as possible with what we've been doing and maximizing limited opportunities.
Alright, hi, I'm Ale Chapel. I'm the student body service director. With us focusing on service, we have started this new activity called Service Thursday, where every Thursday we are assigned a school to go to and help serve. We have them serving Ammon Elementary, Sand Creek Middle School, and Hillcrest High School. At Ammon, we have been able to hang out with the kids at recess and help paint in their gym and in the halls. At Sand Creek, we've been able to hang out with the kids at lunch and spend time with them. We were able to have beanbag competitions there, and right now we're able to have spite balls. We have spite ball competitions and hang out with them. At Hillcrest, we've been able to help our janitors and our teachers with extra things and our admin and maybe some guys have some stories to share.
So kind of just some funny stories just to, you know, get a feel of what we do at Service Thursday. So for around Christmas and Thanksgiving break, I was assigned to go to Ammon Elementary. And for Christmas, I got new white vans, and I thought it was really awesome, you know. And we end up going out to recess with some of the kids, and they think it's really fun to try and make your white vans not so white. And so I forgot to bring them today, I'm really sad I did, but basically they look like brown vans now because they thought it was really fun to step on them. And I had one little girl, her name was Braylon, she was in first grade, and she was always there right when we got there, and she thought my name was Declan, even though it was Demick, and she'd always go, "Oh, Declan, hey." And she'd give me a hug, and then she'd run off, and I'd never see her the rest of the time. So that's just one of my stories.
Well, I was also at Ammon Elementary. There was a fifth grader, and he thought that I was kind of like the guy here or the cool guy. And so he asked if I could do him a favor and bring cheerleaders the next time he came. So I told him I could bring five cheerleaders, and that was my last week there, and I've never seen the kids since. So from my experience, I was at Sand Creek Middle School, and we would always do the beanbag toss. And I mean, some of those kids are getting super cocky, and the one kid comes up to me, he goes, "Hey." He goes, "We had this big old bag of candy, right?" We'd give them a piece every time they made one, and he goes, "If I can make two in a row, it's you give me the entire bag." And I was super confident, I'm like, "Oh, he's not going to make it," right? And he makes the first one, and he had all, I mean, the entire lunch just surrounding him, and he made the second one, and so we gave him the bag of candy. And it was like a riot in the... It was pretty fun.
So as you can hear, Service Thursday is really fun for us and it's really fun for the kids. They really enjoy it, and we enjoy being with them and helping them out. Some things that we are looking forward with improving, we are going to be adding more schools and reaching out more to other schools around us and reaching out to more community programs that are around us.
So this year, we did a... I'm Kyler Stevens, and I am the student body vice president. And so this year, we did a service auction, and it was one of our more servant-oriented, service-oriented activities. And it was actually a fundraiser that would go towards our Adopt a Family fundraiser later during Christmas time. And so what it was is, we all came up with, I mean, we came up with groups of about four or five of us, and we would all come up with some type of service we were going to give to the community if they, if they won the auction. So this is mine. These are the little profiles we made with a picture of us and our service. So ours, we came up with is that we'd be raising garden leaves for whoever bought us. And we all hung up our little profiles in the front office for people to come in and bid on it, and it went really well. Most of our profiles got bid on, and I mean, the only thing we probably changed for next year is do it a little earlier. A lot of times, I mean, we were doing it like late fall, and it snowed pretty early, so for us, we weren't able to raise leaves, but eventually we were able to shovel for them instead. So it worked out pretty good, but next year, we'll probably do an in-person auction and maybe like a silent auction. Those are things we probably changed to do better, but it did, it went pretty well. And these guys are going to tell you about some of their services that they did.
So for our, for one of the services that we decided to provide, me and my little sister said that we would just babysit for one night, like someone there, significant other could go out and go on a date or whatever they wanted to do, and then we would just babysit for the night. So that was really cool that we got to go do that for them.
Alright, and then with our group, we offered to hang up Christmas lights when we were taking them back down when they were ready and also help like with outfit decoration.
My group, we were able to also do raking and shoveling, and we also offered a couple hours to help the teachers.
My name is Jackson Hanson. I am the student body activity leader and officer of literacy and learning. And for our, this next part, we decided to... We decided to kind of help look for ways to raise more money for our big event, which is called Adopt a Family, which is like our big huge fundraiser for the year where we give Christmas to a whole bunch of families in the school area. And so we thought this would be a cool way to help kind of earn money for this fundraiser and help within our own school. And this was fun because it was able, a way for us to kind of help the lunch ladies because I know I've never been back there in the kitchen, and I've never really paid attention to what goes on back there. But this was cool because it was a way to see what they really have to go through, and they were super appreciative of it. And we were able to do this for three months, and our school has two different lunches. We have a first lunch and a second lunch, and so we were able to have four kids helping them for each lunch for those three months. So it was a great way for us to help them and what they have to go through and for us to help raise money for this.
So Adopt a Family is our biggest project that we tackle in student council. We provide Christmas to over, it's usually every year from 50 to 60 families, but recently, the last two years, we've been able to help some people who were at Hillcrest and some individuals within the community. And so this year, we knew that due to circumstances, we would probably have more families than normal, and so we put, we put a lot of stress on ourselves, I guess, to fundraise and start that early. And we were able to raise $23,000, which was more than we've ever raised before by a lot. And last year, we actually started in the hole because last minute we had some families who came to us, and so we ended up helping them. And so with that $23,000, we had $6,000 left over, and we were able to help anyone who came to us. And then we actually reached out and were able to provide more to some other families and individuals. But this was, this is like our favorite activity every year. We spend about three months working on it, and it's just really good for us to be able to connect with the community. All of the families that we provide for are in, within our feeder schools, our elementaries, and then Sand Creek and Hillcrest. And so it was just really eye-opening for us to be able to just like see the needs of our community because lots of times you don't think that people need stuff like mattresses or beds or towels or things like that. So it was just, we're really grateful that we have this opportunity to be able to help the community every summer of year. And then we got, we always get a lot of positive feedback, and then Demick, do you have a question? Yeah, so we got, we always get so many thank yous and like text messages and things, and so keep reviewing one of them.
So this was one of, one of my families that I did with, with my partner for Adopt a Family. She sent me this text, she sent me one on New Year's and on Christmas, and so I'll read the one she sent me on Christmas. She said, "Merry Christmas, Demick. This is Donna and Zadion Dog. Zadion is having a wonderful day. He was very excited about everything he got for Christmas. He's still enjoying his day, playing with everything, eating snacks, and just hanging out with his buddy this afternoon." He said, "This has been my best Christmas. I'm having lots of fun. Thank you for being a Santa and bringing joy in our home. Thank you so much. God bless you and your partner and your families." And then on the New Year's one, it was like, "I'm very proud of you all. Best wishes. Have a safe, healthy, joyous year." And this is just one of the, one of the, like many feedbacks that we got from a lot of the families. And so we really do believe that it's a, it's a really, it's a really good experience, not just for them, but also for us and our student council. You know, connecting with, within ourselves because we, we spend all night wrapping those presents. We pull an all-nighter here at the school, and it's really fun because we're spending time with each other and we really bond as a student council, not just spending time with each other, but seeing the needs of our community and being able to fill that. It's, it's a really, it's a really fulfilling experience.
Yeah, and we're just, yet again, we're so grateful that we have the opportunity and like our admins who always help like organize stuff. We put a lot of time and effort into it, and so we were just very thankful that it went so well this year.
So my name's Logan Sellers. I'm senior class at large, and I'm also the officer of integrity. So with COVID happening this year, it's really hard on all of us, but especially hard on our janitors. They had to sterilize all the rooms every night, and they were also understaffed, so they had a lot of work cut out for them, and we just thought it'd be nice if we gave them a little Christmas. So we took some money from our Adopt a Family fund, gave them a little wish list, and we had them write down whatever they wanted on that, and we went and bought it, wrapped it, and gave it to them. It was just a really great experience, and they were really grateful.
I'm CD Payne, and I'm the student body secretary. So this year, for our student sections, we really wanted to focus on being more positive of what we were cheering and what we were yelling. Instead of yelling like more negative things towards the other school or certain players, we decided to focus on being more positive to our own school and just cheering on our school. And for when we did go, able to go to the games, we all, the students were very cooperative about masking up so that we could keep going to the games. And we were also able to work easily with the admin to reschedule about the tickets and how many people could go. And we were able to have our cheer team and our band be able to be there to support and cheer on our teams this year. So with our upcoming events, some new things we're going to be doing and starting and expanding on. So one thing will be Service Thursday, adding more schools and reaching out to animal shelters, retirement homes, soup kitchens, and areas like that to work with with the new Service Thursdays.
We'll, we'll also be doing a book drive. We're going to be going around collecting books from the community to eventually donating to our feeder schools. We're also going to be fundraising to just buy books in general for our Christmas.
And this Thursday, tomorrow actually, we have our school talent show, and we're hoping to have a pretty good turnout and get as many kids involved as we can, and there should be some pretty cool acts. I know there's one kid that will be performing a scene from Grey's Anatomy in Filipino. It'll, it'll be interesting, it'll be fun.
And then, so in April, I believe, I have a scene called Night at the Park. So with restrictions opening up a little bit and getting warmer, and we're able to go outside for activities, we're going to Freeman Park, and it's kind of just like a little, like a last little hurrah, you know, for the school year, kind of making up for the activities that we may not have been able to throw this year. But we're going to have like chalk, we're going to throw chalk, we're going to have games and food and watch a movie over at Freeman Park. And so it should just be a good time with, just to have the student body, you know, interacting with each other and being able to kind of celebrate a good year. We made it through it, and so.
And then either the first Monday or the second Monday and day, we'll be able to have volleyball. If you don't know what that is, it's boys volleyball. And we'll be able to at least get six teams in there, so it'll be like a volleyball tournament. We'll have student coaches and players, and we'll have fans who want, so it's definitely a student body involvement activity.
And then to close out the year, we'll have prom and graduation. And these are also some big student council, especially senior class activities that we have. We're really excited about prom because we haven't really been able to do any dances, and so we're looking at doing that on May 8th. And that'll just be at Hillcrest, but we're really excited to just be able to plan that and feel some novelty again. And then graduation, we have that on May 28th, and then that'll be at Melaluka Field, and we're also really stoked about that. It'll be a little different, not really our traditional like graduation in the Hillcrest gym, so we're really, really excited about those two things.
So that's, that's basically our presentation. Do you guys have any questions for us, like answered, any comments, concerns?
What was your favorite project?
Oh, for me personally, it has to be Adopt a Family. I, I really love doing Adopt a Family. Not just, like I said, like delivering the presents is really cool and like seeing their reactions, but like just, just being able to know that you've helped in some way, shape, or form in someone's life, like providing people with such a happy Christmas because it's supposed to be, you know, the most wonderful time of the year. And being able to provide that most wonderful time, I think is really awesome, and being able to share it with your friends, you know. I think that's really awesome.
So how do you select your families and how do you determine what to purchase?
So we go to, so we contact the school counselors at each school, and we have a form that we fax it to them, I believe. You spend like upwards of like $600, $700. So you get them all their needs, usually a couple outfits, so pair of shoes, a couple outfits. And then we tried to get winter coats, and then maybe one or two of their wants when it came to the kids and stuff. Any other questions, comments?
The idea that you guys have gone to do all the service sounds pretty awesome to me. It's amazing that you guys could go into the elementaries and then do your practicals and just be over there with the kids. It makes them excited to come over here to Hillcrest and maybe feel like they're part of the team, you know, as opposed to feeling like that someone's just around them, it's exciting that you guys are doing that. And I love your quote that you guys put up at the very beginning, that you guys picked for... for your year. I think that that's just an amazing quote to adjust your sales. I really like that. And then also, the seniors, I was just curious, like what are your plans? I was like the year for the kids who are graduating.
After this year, I would like to serve an LDS mission. And then after that, I was thinking of listening in the Navy and seeing where that'll take me.
I'll also be going on mission. And then after, I'm either going to University of Utah or BYU-I.
I'll also be serving LDS mission coming this summer. And then I, I plan, I hope to go to University of Utah.
I will also be serving LDS mission. Got my papers almost done. And then after that, I don't really know. Just see where life takes me. I don't know. I'm planning on going to college. I just don't know where.
I am not going on an LDS mission. So lots refreshing through the year. I will be attending BYU-I in the fall.
And then I will be attending BYU-Provo in the fall and then possibly serve a mission. So we'll see.
Ali's our junior.
Yeah.
She's running for student vice president though, so.
Have you gotten your papers turned in? Have you gotten a call?
We've started them. I've, I have my two doctor's appointments on the Monday after spring break. And then once those are done, then I will.
Mine will be finished. So I'll be sending in the 21st. Yeah, I have, I've not finished yet.
Were you guys dared by somebody to do your little offer of whatever you could?
Yeah. No, we weren't.
You're not here?
Uh, yeah, so I'm still.
I love it.
I forgot I was, I was supposed to be officer of teamwork.
Yeah, I'm the officer of positivity.
Are there things you guys did with those this year, with those officers?
We got assigned them like, like 10 minutes ago. But I mean, you know, we do work as a team, so.
I have high hopes for the learning at Hillcrest.
Do you guys agree? Thank you for presenting to us and letting us know how your year has gone. And you guys have done great things even being locked up. So I'm just glad you guys have been able to stay in school.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. You guys enjoy your lunch.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll just continue moving along through the agenda.
I should have grabbed it up with TV.
So with, with this, we'll just go ahead and turn the time over to Guy Waynsgard and talk about our supplemental implant facility levies.
Hey, I think we're going to hold for just a sec while we get, get them. Do we want to flip-flop and I'll, if we want to flip-flop for a minute, I'll get this sent to Nick and Eric.
Okay, well, we do have a trip request from Thunder Ridge High School.
So do we have a motion to go ahead and approve that trip request? And moved by Mr. Dance, seconded, or moved by Mr. Jenkins, seconded by Mr. Dance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And then really quick, do we want to assign graduation speeches? I know my daughter's going to be at Thunder Ridge, so I'd prefer to take Thunder Ridge, but if that's okay.
Sounds good to me.
Fine.
Do we expect that there will be a speech given in most of the?
Yeah.
Is that kind of the sense that we're getting?
Yeah. I've seen Bonneville's will probably be pre-recorded where it's at the drive-in like we did last year. I think the others should be live.
Do you see it differently, Jason? I don't.
That's fine. We can adjust if we need to, but I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I, I'm hoping to do whatever, certainly happy to have you do Thunder Ridge in a sense.
Do you guys have a request?
So I, I did Bonneville last year, so probably ought to do a different school this year.
Do you want to do Hillcrest?
I'm fine with Hillcrest.
Okay. So Chad will take Hillcrest. Paul, do you? And Greg? Scott's not here, we can assign him.
Yes, Scott. I understand I'm producing the Bonneville things like.
No, just two Bonnevilles.
That'd be great.
Okay. So on these, yeah, I think whoever takes Technical Careers should also do Bonneville Online. Lincoln will just be on its own. So Greg, or which one do you want? Do you want Lincoln or do you want Technical Careers and Bonneville Online?
I'll do Lincoln.
Okay. All right, so we'll give Scott the other two. I'm doing Thunder Ridge.
I'm doing Hillcrest.
Sounds good.
All right, that takes care of that. Do you want us to keep going on the agenda?
Yeah, why don't we? I've got the Zoom open now and I'll just see if they join.
Awesome. Mary, Mary put the surveys that are going to be attached to, it's part of the superintendent evaluation that we talked about, is sending out these surveys. We need to get them out here in the next few weeks just because we're nearing the end of the school year. So when I was looking through the survey, or the survey questions this morning, one of the things that I did feel like was missing off here was the fiscally responsible question. Something to do with that. If you guys are okay, I can add that to this. Is there, if you guys just kind of look at what's in those questions, they were very similar for the parents and also staff. Is there anything else that you guys feel like needs to be on that?
Physical, maintenance, and?
Fiscally.
Oh, good story.
Fiscal, fiscal.
Yeah, that seems like a good addition. I didn't have any other suggestions.
All right, well, if there's not any, we need to get this out. And I guess I just wanted board, I guess, approval to go ahead and say, yeah, we're going to send this out, you know, so.
Do you know what the question will read on the fiscal?
No, you just tell me what you want it to read. No, I don't. I just noticed that we're lacking in that department, so.
Does the administration demonstrate proficiency in fiscal responsibility? I don't know.
Or how effective is the school district in managing?
Yeah, because it's an A, B, C, D.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, something like that. Seems good.
Okay, I'll get something drafted up.
And then has the administration seen this before now or have we given them a chance to give us input on the questions or the topics? Or is this, I can't remember.
I don't remember.
Okay.
Have you guys seen these? It's very similar, Scott, to what you just sent out, like some of the questions, very similar. So, yeah.
My suggestion would be that we just run that by Scott.
Absolutely.
Whatever input, but.
Did you, are these printed for them at all, Mary?
No, I have a copy right here.
No? Yeah, and Greg can pass his down too. If there's anything that you guys feel like needs to be added to any of it, please let me know. All right. I think as far as that stuff goes, we're done with everything that we needed to discuss, unless there was any additional feedback on those. Okay. Dude, we just knocked out most of the meeting. That's awesome.
Maybe we can be out by 12:30?
I don't know.
That would be nice.
So we'll, we'll just wait until they're ready to, ready to go.
So Eric is on now.
Get projected over to the Apple TVs. He has, you can see Eric.
That would jiggle too many cords.
Has Nick dialed in yet?
I've not seen Nick yet.
It was on the email, so it should, should be coming soon.
Yeah.
It's the office one, right?
Yeah. There it is. I did.
So I think, I mean, Eric can hear us. So if we want to proceed, we can go ahead and get started, Amy, and then we'll just get him projected over there. So see if you can at least see him.
Yeah, so we're ready to just turn over the time to Guy or whoever's going to lead the charge on it.
Yeah, so I guess the first question, really before we get into ballot, is Ford's thoughts on running the supplemental levy and plant facilities or plant facilities levy or both again in May. If you want, I can lead out. And so I guess leading out on that, if you don't run them, then what we're looking at is an $8.6 million budget reduction next year. That, that's a steep budget reduction. And I can get into details on why we're in a much more difficult place than we were in 2009 with the recession. And it's really the matter that we have significantly less flexibility to make budgetary decisions on cuts than we had then. It's really challenging. So, so from a, from a budgeting standpoint, what I would say is, number one, we'll be starting negotiations with teachers in two weeks. And at this point, we really do have to negotiate from a standpoint of the possibility of not having these dollars available. And so with that, the reality is we, we cannot lay off teachers. That's, that's one thing we could do back in 2009, 2010, is we were able to reduce certified staff. I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was somewhere around the numbers of about 60 to 65 staff members we laid off back in 2009, 2010. Some of those were certified. And what changed in that year, what the legislature did is they, prior to that, we had to hire every single teacher that they provided for, that they funded, or else we'd lost funding for that teacher. And then in that year, with the recession, they, recognizing the, and the recession really happened in the, it started in the fall. So when the legislature came into session, they recognized the crisis that schools would be in. And so they passed legislation specifically to help schools address that. And one of the key things they did is they said, "We can go all the way down and hire 90% of this certified staff and still receive 100% of funding for those." And, and that was extremely helpful. It came at the cost of people losing their jobs, which is really difficult, but as a whole from the district, it helped us maintain our, our operations.
Sizes.
Right, so that affected that is, class sizes went up, I wouldn't say by 10%, because it wasn't just teachers. A lot of the places we eliminated, at the elementary level, we had 14, well, it would have been 14 back then, it would have been probably 12, PE slash music teachers in every elementary school, and we eliminated those. We reduced our counseling staff. And I don't remember how many counseling positions we eliminated, but we eliminated counseling staff. And then we, we did adjust the number of teachers that we were hiring. And one benefit is in a growing district and with turnover, people didn't necessarily lose their jobs, we just didn't replace, we didn't hire new positions. And as people left and through attrition, we didn't replace all those. So class sizes absolutely went up as a result of that. And what that did is it really, it allowed us to maintain the salary schedule. So teacher salaries were not cut, except we did have to implement furlough days. So we held teacher salaries steady. I don't remember, remember if there's an increase or a decrease. That goes back too far from my memory. But, but we did say, "We're going to have to furlough some days." But by and large, we were able to maintain the pay that teachers had because we were hiring fewer teachers with the budget cuts. So really, the budget cuts came not from reducing salaries, but from hiring fewer people. After that happened, legislation came back the next year that said, because class sizes went up across the state, that if any district's average class size was less than the state average, then you would lose that flexibility at the rate of half a percent? 1% per year. So in the eight or nine years since that legislation went into effect, we've lost 1% of flexibility every year, which means we now have to hire 97% of the teachers that, that we are funded for, or else we lose that funding. So really, and, and we're right on that, on that cusp every year. And so, so, so the reality is laying off people, laying off certified staff doesn't, isn't an option. At the same time, our, our salaries have been maintained at that level they were. And so every year that we have to hire 1% more teachers, that, that means we're paying 1% more in salaries, which is adversely impact our budgets. Why we've seen our, it's one of the key reasons why we've seen our fund balance decrease is because we have a salary schedule that was really built for hiring 90 to 92% of our teachers, and now we're hiring 97%. So that flexibility we used to maintain good salaries in the district, we've lost that flexibility, which is why the supplemental dollars have been increasingly important for it. So, so really, what's on the table at first glance, and really, we, we have to reduce salaries. There's, there's no question that when 90% of our costs are salaries and benefits, we have to reduce salaries. And really, the only way we can do that is, we will have to look at classified positions because the state doesn't have that same tight hold on classified that they have on certified. So we will have to look at classified positions and likely, there's going to be people that lose their jobs if we don't have these dollars. So I hate targeting people, but I mean, just at kind of first blush, one of the programs we brought back with the increase to the supplemental levy four years ago was elementary PE and music. We did it through paraprofessionals and classified staff and not certified staff. And so that's one that unfortunately, we're going to have to take a look at because I, I just don't know how we continue to fund things that we specifically created from supplemental dollars without supplemental levy to fund it. We'll have to look at furlough days. And I'll just say, even legally, I'm not, I'm not quite sure how we'll quite do furlough days because there's now state minimum salaries that were not in place 10 years ago. So I don't know when the state says that the minimum salary is, this year it's $40,000. I can't remember what it goes to next year. I, I don't know if we can furlough below that or not. And so if you can't furlough that group, it's just, it's, it's extremely, extremely complex.
After the furlough, would still make more than the minimum potentially?
Yeah. So that means you're furloughing some certified staff, but you're not applying that equally. And I think that now becomes problematic because what the state law reads is, if we're going to reduce salaries, we have to do it uniformly. And so I, it's, it's a mess. I just, it really is. And I know, I know, there is one comment I read today on Facebook that said, "When we, as voters, when we approve a supplemental levy, we expect that to expire." And if that really is the mindset of our voters, we're in trouble. Candidly, we're just in trouble because we're counting honestly on a yearly renewal of that. And it's, it's going to take some really, I don't know, I honestly don't know how we backed out of a salary schedule that's been in place now for a a salary schedule that's been in place now for a decade, that's relied on those supplemental dollars. So is there anything else you want to add? I mean, other things that are just obvious, that are hard, and it's interesting, you know, the criticism I've heard over the last week or so is you're making threats. And I'm not trying to make threats, I'm just trying to have honest conversations about what we're looking at. But there's no state allocation for extracurricular programs. And so, right now, was it 3/4 of a million-dollar guy roughly is what we pay just in salary for coaches and advisors for our extracurricular programs? That doesn't account for how much we pay also in travel costs and supplying equipment and those types of things. So it'd be just over a million-dollar savings if we were to suspend our extracurricular programs next year. So, I mean, there's no question that that's going to have to be on the table to try to get to $8.6 million. So furlough days, if we can do furlough days, it's about $300,000 a day is our current payroll. So 10 furlough days for everybody from classified staff, the teachers, counselors, administrators, is going to add us $3 billion. So that's, we're still not even between, so say, we're eliminating the PE and music program, or eliminating, or suspending extracurricular activities across the board, and doing 10 furlough days, which is a pretty drastic furlough, we're still not to the full $5.8 million. I think we're pretty close to about $4 to $4.5 million with those ticket items. Pay freezes would be the other thing potentially that we could do is, we do have additional dollars that will be coming to us from the state for teacher salaries and administrator salaries. And we can simply freeze that like we did this year. I'll just tell you, I hate the thought of going into negotiations and saying, sorry, but two years in a row, we expect you to keep working as hard as you're working, and you're not getting, you're not going to see another dime. So I guess that's why I feel strongly that, and again, based on conversations I've had with patrons, it didn't, some patrons, you know, received criticism for phrasings, but some patrons didn't understand that when this failed, that we were not just losing the increase, that we were losing the entire supplemental levy and entire plant facility levy. I'm not saying that would have changed people's minds. I think maybe they would have voted no and hoped we'd come back again. But I've certainly had conversations with patrons that didn't understand that, and didn't understand that we're now, we're different than counties and cities. We're not asking for just an increase. This is literally a renewal as well. So without that, it's, education looks fundamentally different, and school looks fundamentally different for staff, for students, for families next year. So all that being said, is why, I guess I feel strongly, we'd need to go back out. And my recommendation, I think at this point, would be to simply ask for renewal amounts. And I know that comes at some political cost to people saying, you really didn't need that other $2 million you were asking for. But there have been some things that have changed since, we talked about this in December and January, that I think are key factors on why we wouldn't have to ask for that from supplemental dollars. And we can use things like federal dollars to help offset, or help make up that difference that we were asking for. There's also potentially still the shift in state funding that could increase revenue to the district as they switch from attendance to enrollment-based funding. The interesting thing there, though, is we're still tied back to hiring 97% of our teachers. So even though that's theoretically 7% more revenue to the district, we're going to have to hire 7% more teachers, and that's going to take up the majority of those extra dollars that are coming to us. So even that's not a windfall that would really help us if we had that flexibility. If we could just maintain the current number of teachers we have and didn't have to hire more, that'd be a huge windfall for us. And we could definitely levy, ask our patrons to support less dollars from local property taxes. So I guess that's my, what I've been thinking about for the last week. Guy, do you have any other thoughts that you think would be?
No, I think there's lots of details, lots of questions that we could go through. And so I guess I'd just be interested to know your thoughts and your questions, and we're happy to work through those details.
Just have a quick, oh.
I'm just going to say, I wonder if our patrons have this belief that we're going to get a whole bunch of federal dollars. I mean, there's a lot of talk about, you know, boosting education from the federal government and supply, and I wonder if our patrons just said to themselves, well, if they're going to get all these federal dollars, why do they need more money?
Yeah.
And I, I don't know how you, because we don't have the federal dollars yet, and we don't know what it will be.
Yeah. Guy prepared a document today that is super helpful, I think, just a really concise and straight answer on what federal dollars we have received, what reductions we've been given from the state, and how those two really blend together, and then what we're looking at going forward. So again, Chad, to me, that's one of those things that when we approved going, the ballot measure in January for a supplemental levy and plant facility levy increase, the SRR2 funds, we were not aware of at that time, and SRR3 funds, we definitely weren't aware of at that time. And so those are both federal dollars that weren't, we had no idea were coming to us when we made the decision that we would ask for an increase from our patrons. So.
So let me just kind of walk you through this. So this is just looking at it from a very simplified view. There are, there's lots of moving pieces in here, so this doesn't represent actually what we will see or can do. It's just very high level. And this is how I think most people from the outside would look at it. So starting back in the spring last year, we received a reduction in state revenue and a holdback for fiscal year 20 of $724,000. For fiscal year 21, our holdback amounts to about $3.5 million. We've lost the emergency levy this year, so we lose that $2 million. Next year, presumably, we will not have an emergency levy, so we will be down $2 million in revenue next year. With supplemental levy not passing, at this point, we're down $5.8 million next year, and also down the $2.8 million in the plant facilities. So those are the reductions, looking over those two years of time. So if you look at the federal money coming in, the first one, SRR1, there were actually three allocations from SRR1, the flow-through, which was the majority, $1.2 million, $123,000 for blended learning, and $29,000 for social-emotional. SRR2, which we learned about late December, and so SRR1 money, we, the state has given us the ability to spend that. SRR2 money, we still, the legislature is in process of approving that. If we wanted to spend that money right now, we can't. It is not available to us yet. I would expect within a month or so, we will have access to SRR2 funds. SRR3, as part of the stimulus package that just passed within the last couple of weeks, all we have on that are estimates. The estimate is that you take our SRR2 funds of five, just over $5 million, multiply that times 2.25, that'll give us our estimate for SRR3 funds. One big difference with SRR3 is that they are telling us, and the language is in there, that 20% of that has to be used.
For programs targeted specifically to help students who have, yep, to catch up. Yep.
But it's not just school in general, like?
Well, they, again, it's a federal, it's federal government, like, it's like Title I to me, that there's always these restrictions from the federal government that you have to use it this way. So just saying, it's just school, that's not going to cut it, just like, it doesn't cut it with Title I dollars. It's going to be specific programs we do that we can say, this is a program, and this is what we intended it to do to address learning loss. So in Title I dollars, I always talk about supplant versus supplement, and they've largely removed that from this. But I think if we're talking about learning loss, that's going to be the expectation is, it can't replace something you're already doing. You have to use this to do something different from what you were doing before, specifically to address learning loss from COVID. So again, we don't have, we don't have guidance yet, but that's what I expect when they're specifically here marking those dollars for it.
Well, so you've addressed the restrictions on SRR3 learning loss, but aren't all those, or most of those other funds also restricted in some fashion in how they're used?
It's been, it's been a really interesting ongoing discussion. So the SRR1 funds and the governor's funds were very, very directive on what we could and could not use them for. And it was frustrating for us at a level to say, I can't believe we have to spend money on new expenditures when we are having money withheld from us. And that was really the message we had all the way through December on those first two rounds. With SRR2, we thought we were facing the same thing, because that's what we'd been told on the first two rounds. But through, it seemed like through a lot of conversations between different levels of government at the state level, so between the governor's office, the State Department of Education, and I'm not sure what, how involved the legislature was, but state board, the State Department relaxed their expectations for SRR2 and really said, if you are using it for keeping your schools open, then you can count it. So, but the trade-off for that has been, what, to me, the states, how do I say this, to want to be somewhat politically correct, but the state shifted their expectations for the holdback. And so they, originally, they told us, we're holding back dollars by freezing teachers on the career ladder, by freezing administrator increases, by freezing leadership premiums. And there was a handful of other smaller ones, but those were the big-ticket items. And now in January, they said, never mind, we're actually, we are expecting you to pay all those things that you held back, and we're reducing your discretionary funds. So all that means is those SRR2 dollars disappeared into what we'd already spent for discretionary, because now we have to use those dollars to pay our teachers and, well, contractually, all we have to do is pay our teachers. But there is increases there for classified staff and for administrative staff as well. Does that make sense?
I think so.
So really, SRR2, SRR2 was just wiped out at the state level by saying, there are specific things that you now need to pay that we were told we shouldn't budget for last summer.
With regards to rerunning this in May versus August, can you give me the why? Like the what for?
I'll give you the number one why. It's teacher contracts. So if we don't rerun it in May, then we're going to have to come to a master agreement that's going to include a reduction of teacher salaries. To issue contracts.
In June.
Yep.
And so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Somehow recognize the hard work of our teachers and administrators through this pandemic. They have all been willing to come to work. They want to come to work. They want to teach. We haven't had, that I'm aware of, we haven't had any pushback in that regard, yet our patrons are not willing to reward that. And I, that bothers me. I wished we, I don't know how to get that message out, but I just feel like I'm just disappointed in that.
Not my main, but one of my concerns is just what's happened in the past. When we've run back-to-back like this, the backlash that we got was pretty severe, and to the point where they've brought it to the legislature to try and get rid of all of these dates that we can run, which have already been limited in the past few years anyway. But they want to limit them even more, and that concerns me, just because this is what we faced a few years ago with the Thunder Ridge bond. That's just a concern that I have.
SRR3 is really a long ways off before we would have any spending authority on that. Another concern that I have with counting on that is there's legislation going through right now in Boise that would use, presumably use federal money to backfill and save property taxes. And if that happens, the federal government will claw back or take back some of the federal money that they have given to us. I certainly don't understand all the details and how much, but that does cause me some concern as far as banking on the fact that we're going to have this, because it's not a guarantee.
There's another really interesting complication with using SRR3 to pay teacher salaries, which is what we essentially have to do. And that is, because of that 97% rule from the state, if we, we've got to figure out how we would code their salaries, because if we, we can't show that we're paying less than what the state's allocating for those teachers, if that makes sense. So we'd really have to do some creative thinking on how to do that.
We have to show that salaries are paid out of the general fund in order to get state revenue. So if we tried to pay the salaries with the federal revenue, we would lose our state revenue. So.
Are there any other districts that are kind of in a similar boat to us? Like, and where I'm going with that, is there any kind of administrative relief that we could kind of lobby for on the 97% rule?
Well, it's state statute, so we'd have to have, the legislature would have to amend that statute this year. So we could certainly reach out to our senators, but I think we're so late in the legislative session, I don't see it happening. I did talk with RBE, because the referendum that changed the statute came from the Idaho Education Association. I said, it'd be nice if, for us to be able to maintain teacher salaries if we had that flexibility back. But, man, it's hard for teachers to consider having larger class sizes. It's almost a non-starter with them.
Yeah.
This document, this sheet here, you're showing, and I understand there's complications with that SRR3, but we're down 1.23, 1.2 million. Do we have any room to lower the supplemental levy?
So, just a quick caution, this is very high level. So there's things on here that I haven't reflected, such as in SRR1, we have to share that money with private schools. So I haven't reduced it for that, because I'm trying to just match all the documents that are right on the State Department website. In order to get to a number that I would be comfortable with, we would have to get very far into the weeds and talk about some very specific details. At a high level, is it possible to reduce the supplemental levy and make it work? Yes, but there's lots, we'd have to work through all the details and different things associated with that.
I'm a taxpayer in the district, just like we all are, so I understand people feeling like we need to do things to lower property taxes, but, which we have. So number one, we did.
Rather dramatically.
And that was going to be a key point I would make, is we lowered property taxes by $120 this year, and there was no acknowledgement of that fact from people that were opposed to our efforts to pass these. And so that is my first concern, is let's just theoretically say, we say, let's just use SRR funds and do this. Next year, that gets us one year. Next year, what we're looking at is, what did we come up with, Guy, today? $250? We'll be out of, what we'll be saying is, we want a $250 increase to your property taxes next year. And if we couldn't get 50 this year, I can't imagine how we think we would get support to raise people's property taxes next year by $250. So there's that political element to it first. The second is, I really believe in legislative intent. And the intent from Congress on allocating these dollars to schools is to help schools with the additional needs that we have because of COVID, and to help kids that are struggling. And so if we simply shift this and say, we're going to use this to do property tax relief instead, and reduce everybody's property taxes by $250 this year, I'll just say, a lot of our families are, they're getting SRR funds as well from their stimulus checks. And now we're going to add to that even more by saying, we're not going to, we're going to eliminate what we've historically provided to schools, and expect the federal government to. government to fill that gap for. So it just, it just doesn't feel right to me to say, that's what we need to use S R three for. If we end up in a, in a bind and it's our only option, then I will do what we need to do, but I just, I guess for me, I feel like we should still have a responsibility to at least ask our voters to renew this before we walk away from it. And I, and I understand, I mean, that certainly comes at a, at a political cost, and there's going to be a lot of criticism that we ran this back to back.
The difference is too, I guess with that, Scott, is that we wouldn't be running the same thing.
I, I would definitely not ask us to run the same thing. I don't think that would be.
Right, because what we would be coming back for in May would be specifically just the renewal of what you've been paying in your taxes for the past couple of years.
Yep.
Or 10 years, if you're, you know, you're talking the supplement, or the plant.
Yep.
So that's different. It's, at least it's not, we're coming back with the exact same thing, which is what happened with the Thunder Ridge.
Right.
You know, thing, so.
I hesitate to make.
Sweeping decisions based on 12% voter turnout.
Yeah.
I, and it is what it is. I mean, that is what the turnout was, and we do have to live with that. And so in one sense, I get it, but in another sense, we don't know what our community wants because they didn't come vote.
They didn't come. They didn't show up.
Right, and, and again, I don't know where that goes, other than I just don't, I just want to be careful about.
Right.
Acting like we know what our community wants when nobody's spoken.
Yeah.
Or very few, I should say, have spoken. But it doesn't change the political reality of budget season, and we only have one more chance to do it before budgets and.
Well, I, I feel good about going back in May. I feel like we go back with, this is a maintenance budget. We're, we're trying to maintain.
And.
We're not trying, you know, and in December, we have more knowledge now than we did in December.
Yep.
And had we known now what we did in December, we may not have tried to raise it.
Yeah.
We may have, and I don't know what the result would have been, if it would have been any different or not, but.
Yeah. Yeah, and I would just say, to me, it's not even a maintenance budget, it's a $1 million reduction from, sorry, 2 million, because.
Right.
Emergency levy, we're not budgeting that emergency levy anymore. And we haven't talked a lot about that here, but as Guy and I have talked, we're no longer going to budget for the emergency levy. I think that's a mistake. The board will still have, with growth, will still have the opportunity to decide if the board wants to do that as additional dollars.
Right.
But we're not going to include it in our spring budgeting process anymore. I think that's a, I think that's a poor practice. So I know why we did it in the past, but I just, I think we need to get, move away from that.
Yeah.
So we are talking about $2 million less operationally than we've historically had.
And to be clear, I think this is what you just said, but just to emphasize for my own benefit, if nobody else is, the board is not saying, we're making no commitment about future emergency levies. We are preserving our fiduciary responsibility to use that tool if we feel it's necessary.
Yep.
But as administrators, you're not going to count on that, and you're not going to use that in the budgeting process.
Exactly. So we will, we will no longer present budgets to the board that are including an emergency levy unless the board tells us to.
Yeah.
The board could always tell us, no, this is what we expect you to do, but at this point, I just, I want to get away from that practice. What it does for me is it puts us in a position of, what we're negotiating with teachers, we're anticipating revenue that may not be there. That's, that's not a good situation to be in.
When, when does that, when does that come up as an option?
September.
September.
When you set the levy rate.
Yeah, okay.
Then we have our enrollment for the year.
Okay.
So, so I'm supportive of running again in May. I have lots of mixed feelings about whether we should change the dollar amount, but I certainly don't claim any grand insight into that topic, so I'm more than happy to go with your recommendation.
Yeah, and I would say, I mean, one thought I had is, do we want to put a secondary question on each of them with that? But candidly, because we do have federal dollars, I, I'm perfectly happy to say we can use that to offset what we were asking for in those additional increases. I just don't feel like it should replace every dollar that we, of those levies. So, but again, I'm honestly one person who's making our recommendation. Guy, do you feel any different?
It feels to me like that, feels to me like that where we're losing the most is in the physical facilities. I mean, because we were, that money is, in my opinion, desperately needed, the extra money, but I'm not willing to go back and ask for the same amount. But it seems to me like, it feels like we could get along with the same, or even a little less on the supplemental, but the facilities is, you know, we just got a lot of square footage, a lot of additional square footage that we did not have 10 years ago.
The, the thing is too, with that, Chad, is that we can, even though those levies are a 10-year levy, we could still rerun it in another couple of years when the federal money goes away.
Goes away, okay.
You know what I mean? And ask for an increase on that, on the plant, because we all know that we need it, and our schools, like, we've added Thunder Ridge, Black Canyon, four new elementary schools that we didn't have 10 years ago. So it's justifiable, but right now, if we do have the, the federal dollars to pay for it, and we can possibly look at that in a few more years and see where we're at.
And then, to me, the benefit is, and this is something Margino has recommended, we're not jeopardizing losing it if it doesn't pass, we're simply seeing if they'll approve an increase to it. And I think that makes some sense if we consider it again in three or four or five years.
Any thoughts about the voter turnout problem? I mean, that's, I don't know that we want to take a lot of time on that topic today, but, but it's a huge piece of the puzzle.
It is a problem, yeah.
When you get, well, yeah, you know.
Yeah, no, we've, we've talked some, I'll just say, I think, I think going through the pandemic, we've over communicated with patrons, which has been good to an extent, but that always comes with a trade off. And I think, honestly, when people see a weekly update every Thursday, they aren't, a lot of people are not reading what's in the update, they just want to know what's happening in school next week, they want to see the top line, and that's it. And so there are a lot of families that said they weren't aware. I spoke with a dad today, who's actually married to one of our employees, and he said he wasn't aware of the supplemental levy until he saw, went to his kid's school and saw that there was voting happening. So there are some things I think we need to do that's specific, more specific towards this messaging, and honestly, I think we did, and I'll, me personally, I think I did a poor job of communicating this with our employees to the level I should have, so those are at least some things we've talked about. We did, we've got a, one thing that my, that my wife suggested, that, you know, I thought about three or four years ago, and it's just been dropped off my plate, but it's having a way for people who don't have kids in school to sign up to receive our communications. And so I worked on that the other night, we'll have that on the website, and at least even think about potentially sending a postcard home to our voter, registered voters, so it's a way they could sign up to get information if they're not currently. So, but it is always a challenge on how, how to get this news out, but, I mean, yeah. It was in the newspaper, there was some discussion in the newspaper, some discussion on radio, but.
Yep.
I think the people who heard the, who listened to those radio shows turned out.
Yeah.
So, it's everybody else we needed to turn out.
Yeah.
Well, I feel like what, what we did with the media was working. I participated in the one live and then listened to two others.
Yeah.
The two other one, and we, the feedback was, we had over 1,000 people listening.
Yep.
They just didn't get out to vote.
Yeah.
Right.
And I, I don't know. So I guess a couple of things, well, sorry, Greg, you can talk first.
Well, just real quickly, I, I don't know, I'm not going to speak to anybody's intentions. I'll just say, I know historically, school districts have mentioned that maybe they're better off running things in these off elections. That may be true in some districts, but I don't know that that's true in District 93.
Yeah.
If it ever was true, I bet it's not true since 2015.
Yeah.
Or whenever.
Yeah.
You have, and will have for the foreseeable future, I believe, an organized opposition to everything we try to do.
Yeah.
And they're not, they're not interested, in my experience with them, they have not been interested in discussions or compromise, and I'm open minded, maybe that'll change in the future. Not optimistic, but I'm willing to be open minded about it, and I'm always happy to talk to anybody. But assuming that's all true, low turnouts hurt us, don't help us.
Yeah.
And, and that's, I know it kind of stands on its head, what maybe some districts or even our district in the past thinks about, but I wonder if that's the case. I certainly don't know.
No, I, I honestly agree, hindsight's 2020, and I thought the same thing. I thought, seeing these results, if I would have known, I would have run it in November, and when we do, we would have high voter turnout, and people were engaged. And so I would say, if you look across the state, we are an anomaly. And the question is, why are we an anomaly? And I think two things that stand out to me is, one, we were asking for an increase. However, there were other districts around us that asked for an increase and had high results. West Jefferson stands out to me as, that's a very rural, farmland-based economy, and their voters still turned out at about 70% in support of an increase, and ours did not. So, so it's a head scratcher. The other thing, and I'll just say, when you face an organized opposition, I think it significantly impacts voters. So I, I don't disagree that, I think, I'm not sure May's going to be a whole lot better, though. You know what I mean?
Right.
In an off year like this year, I don't know that May's proofably much better than March.
Right, but we are where we are.
We are where we are.
So Pocatello passed their supplemental levy. I don't remember the percentage, but quite nicely, didn't they?
I'd say, on average, it was about a 70-30 across the state on support for supplemental levies. The ones that did fail typically were asking for increases, but not everyone that asked for an increase failed either, so. But, but there was, to me, that was one of the head scratchers, is just seeing how much support there was across the state for people supporting their local schools with these levies, and how opposite our results were. And, and it was even more surprising to me when, you know, we just recently did a survey with our patrons, it said things were going great in the district. And I think maybe sometimes that pacifies people, that all's well, and, and they're not necessarily motivated, or think it's going to pass, and therefore, I don't need to go out and actively do it. So I, I hope it was a bit of a wake up call to our people that are supportive of how things are going, and understand that it takes a commitment from us as local taxpayers to keep those good things happening.
Well, the focus on the opposition was the potential tax increase. That was the focus.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's, it's an easy target on the ballot.
It is.
And honestly, it was, for me, the hardest thing to explain in our Facebook lives is, yep, this is what you're going to see on the ballot. If you're approving this, then you're saying you're okay with it going up to that much. Chances are it's going to be less, I can't tell you how much less. It's such a hard thing to talk about, and that's why renewals are simply, are simple, it's just going to say this, this world, this is a renewal, and you will not, it won't be an increase over what you were paying before. And we've got the ballot language in front of us, I think, to see how that's phrased, so.
Yeah, ballot language, Scott? Because right now, we don't have the, the legislation to prohibit us from using that word, right? We can use the word renewal on the ballot, like, still.
Yeah. Nick, are you there? I don't know if you heard Amy's question, but there is no reason we can't use the word renewal on the ballot, correct?
Right, we can say that, sure, sure.
And, and even when I read the March ballot, I felt fairly comfortable with the explanation that, you know, this is an increase, this is where we are now. So I think it did explain that we're here, we are asking for an increase, and, but I, I don't know if patrons understood that if it didn't, if it failed, we get zero.
Yeah. I agree. I mean, again, there's some patrons that did. I heard from a patron today that was very clear, that he understood that perfectly, and, and there was no question that he was, when he was voting, no, he was expecting this to expire. But I've had other conversations with other patrons that didn't understand that at all, so it's.
So we took a risk when we.
Yeah, yep, yep. That increase is certainly a risk.
Can I ask another question of Eric?
Yeah, Eric, are you on?
I'm on.
Hi, Eric. So.
Hi.
Quick question on the language where it says, in favor of authorizing a supplemental levy in the amount of blah, 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 or against authorizing a supplemental levy in the amount of. Is it possible in that sentence to say, in favor of authorizing a renewal of supplemental levy?
So that's really a question for Nick. Did you hear the question, Nick?
I couldn't quite hear.
So, so on the ballot, she's asking if it's possible to include the phrase, in favor of a renewal?
Of authorizing.
Yeah, I think it's hard to mess with those boxes. Those are kind of mandated by the Secretary of State's office. We've, we've actually talked to them. Can we say, you know, yes, no, versus in favor of or against? And this is kind of scripted out from Secretary of State's office. I mean, their guidance is not legally binding, but it's kind of a safe harbor to use that. I, I think that once they get to the box, they should be yes or no, they should know yes or no after they read up above. And we can say, I mean, we've tended to say, you know, the existing levy expires, but we could, we could phrase that slightly differently, I think, like you're suggesting, to just say, you know, to, up to everybody, but the proposed levy renews the current levy, so there will be no change. We could say, the legislature is working on this bill, on this section right now. There's a proposed bill to, at least with regard to levies, make the language very specific, and say, it's got to be verbatim like this. Now, we've pushed back for how much the legislature would change for bonds, that's off the table, I know right now, but, but the legislature has been, been working, been pushing for, you know, I'm seeing that you know, just from your own district and over that part of the state, a couple legislators who have had this issue at the front of their agenda, and, I don't know, Eric, maybe I can pull that up, just see what the, again, this legislation wouldn't go into effect till, till I won, so unless you push the election to August, we're dealing with existing, existing law. Just a second here.
Is that looking credible? That that's going to pass in the Senate? I know it already went through the House, and it passed. Does anybody know?
Nick, are you trying to share the legislation, the current, the current draft of the legislation?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
If you want me to, we can just read it, but, but.
I just, I just gave you the ability to share your screen, Nick.
Okay. Yeah, this is, again, it's not super relevant, you know, but, but here's, proposing, proposing as an existing levy at the same time, second expires, additional statement made and provided, the half base, proposal replaces an existing levy, if the proposed is approved, the tax will increase or decrease. Actually, I don't know, Eric, have we agreed to this one, the consequence of the?
No, that's come, that's going out, that's being struck.
That's being struck. Okay, so, yeah, I think the, but then there's this provision here that says, ballot question must include the information, and may not include other information regarding any other bond or levy or matter, previous kind of, except if specifically authorized. So what we're going to end up with after, till I won, there's a House bill, significant Senate amendment. a House bill, significant Senate amendments, maybe some debate whether the House will concur, if they're more strident and want to come back next year. But if it passes, and we're in August, then we will be, this is the language we'd have to use. So, we, you know, have to just kind of say it that way. But, you know, in the meantime...
So, the question, Nick, is we can't change what's in the box?
Short answer is I would not change what's in the box. I think if you want to work with what comes before the box, I think there's some room to do that.
Nobody reads what's before the box. That's the problem. They read the box. Yeah.
But this has worked pretty effectively. I don't know, Eric, somebody, got to take our shoes off the gown, but there's at least 15 districts, I would say, that have renewed supplementals with exactly this language. In other words, we went beyond the first sentence, which was what the statute says, and with some guidance from the Secretary of State's office, we added the second sentence, pretty much this way.
Yeah. And I'd point out, too, that Post Falls was one of the other sizable districts that didn't pass their supplemental levy. And it was a renewal of the same amount, but they did not include this replacement, you know, that it's replacing an expiring levy. And so, it, you know, I think it would've helped them if they would've had it just as a net no change.
Yeah. They didn't fail by much. It's like 50 votes.
So, as far as what we need to do, we need to decide if we're going to rerun in May, and if we're only going to ask for the renewal. That's, I think, what's on the board's table right now, so.
Yep. I mean, the other option, there, we could do a special meeting the week after spring break, or...
On Monday.
On Monday, yeah.
Like we just do to the county?
By 5 o'clock, Monday, the 29th.
So, I mean, if there's any other information the board feels like would be important to have before making the decision, then we could potentially see what we can do to get that information to the board on that Monday.
My only question is, as far as the supplemental levy is concerned, could we reduce that in any way, for, for any amount, and still be fiscally sound with our, with our contracts?
I'd say because of the federal dollars, the answer is yes, we could. And then I'd say the trade-off for that is, when those federal dollars are gone, then it's, we would need to do an increase to replace them. And I just don't know if we can emphasize enough that, that we, we have lost $2 million from our operating budget from the emergency levy. And, and again, to Greg's point, I think the board will likely have an opportunity to consider that again in August. But from a budgeting standpoint, we are reducing already our operational costs by $2 million.
I think politically, that strengthens our position by telling the patrons we are not counting on that, where it's not included.
That was part of their...
Discomfort?
We got some flack on that.
Yes, because we did that, and so we don't do it anymore. And that certainly didn't change a great deal, did it?
Yeah. And, I mean, candidly, we, we haven't had the opportunity to, for the board, to truly decide whether to do that or not. This year, we didn't qualify, so it was off the table, and we just had to reduce the $2 million from the budget. What I'm actually hopeful and optimistic of is we have a supplemental levy, and we qualify for an emergency, and the board truly has the option to decide whether or not to do that.
Yeah. Is there a halfway point in there between what we went for and what we...
The hard part for me is, S R 3 is just a theory at this point. We, we do not know that we're getting that money. We should, if it follows the pattern of the others, but we don't know that that $11 million is coming.
I think it'd be foolish to plan on something that we don't have in our pocket.
Yeah. And to not know really how we can use it. But that would be foolish.
Yeah, that would be a bad move.
So, is there any other information the board feels like you would want to know before? I mean, the only, the only thing in my mind is if, if there's any sense in reaching out to patrons to see if they voted. If they did, why not? If they voted no, why not? But, I don't know. I just, I'm not sure if that's going to change any of the reality that we're facing, so.
Historically, Idaho has had this problem on a number of elections for lack of a voter turnout. You know, there's apathy. And then after the point, people say, well, if I would've known.
Yeah.
But that's, yeah, history doesn't help.
Yep.
So, I have a question for Nick. On, on the ballot language for the supplemental, it talks about we can levy an amount for the 5.8 million. I believe on the plant facility, it says up to 2.8. Does, does that mean that if the supplemental levy passes at 5.8, we cannot levy an amount lower than 5.8?
No, we could, we could change that. I, I sort of think it's implicit, and I bet if I went back and looked, we've, previous versions, we maybe have set up to, or not, it's not intentional to say this is, you know, take it or leave it, or it's all or nothing. The board certifies every year, and you can certify it. You can add that if you want.
I would prefer to add it myself.
Yeah, fair enough.
That was a good catch, Guy. That was really good.
Because then, then the answer to your question, Paul, becomes, let's wait and see. Because by the time we set these budgets in end of August, 1st of September, we should know much more about S R 3, and it may...
Have a very informed discussion with the board in September, when the board sets a levy rate on how much, how much do we need to levy from the supplemental?
Well, listen, certainly respect those who don't want their taxes increased, and those that voted no for that, for that purpose.
Why is that worthy of respect?
Just because, you know, they have that...
Sorry, I mean, I'm very serious.
But, but I also acknowledge what Greg's comment is, is that only 12% of the people voted. We don't know what the, you know, we really don't know what the will of the people are.
Then I apologize. I didn't mean to be so snarky.
But I, but I, I mean, Madam Chair, I'm willing to make a motion.
Just for Greg's point, I think it's worth, you know, for people that may watch this, our video, I sent this answer to a patron today, but compared to last year, this year, our patrons, we paid $26 less per $100,000 for bond payments, $25 less per $100,000 for supplemental levy, and $12 per $100,000 less for the plant, and $58 less per $100,000 for the emergency. And we were asking for a $26 increase. So, all we're asking for on the supplemental was really to pay the same amount for $100,000 we paid the year before. And on the plant, we were asking for a fraction of what we were no longer paying for the emergency to increase that. So, to your point, I, I think that's a hard thing is, I really don't believe people's taxes would've gone up, although that was what was certainly touted by the opposition. I really believe we, we, it was, well, it would be well within our means to control that, and nobody would've had to pay another dollar. So, to me, Chad, I think it's smoke and mirrors, and people that really want to put out the idea that you're, you're going to pay skyrocketing property taxes when that's not the reality of the situation.
So, I guess basically, for the board, and with the four of us that are here, do you guys want Scott to run a survey to our parents, to ask questions about the levy and get that information on the Monday? Or do you, would you guys just rather just vote today?
I want to vote today.
I want to vote today.
Greg?
Yeah, I'd rather vote today. I'm not opposed to getting the information. It can still inform us, even though we've made the decision about what we're doing in terms of the ballot language, but I...
And I, I'll just say, I hesitate. I really hate sending a survey. Tell us, tell us if you voted for or against. And I don't know, it just, it feels intrusive to me at this point. So, anyway, I've been hesitant.
When, when in reality, I think if we get our, our, make sure it's out to vote, I mean, from the surveys that we've sent out that are supportive of the district right now, and we know there's going to be 2,000, at least 2,000 no votes, just based on this, and we get our families out to vote that are supportive and supportive of it, that's...
That's where the effort needs to be.
Yeah.
So, how many people do we employ, and how many students do we have? What's our total number that we serve?
Students and staff, 15,000.
Pardon?
15,000.
For staff?
So, well, so 13,300 students and 1,700 permanent staff.
Okay, sorry, I was thinking 1,500 when you said that. 15,000.
So, 2,100 people is what percentage of the, that told us no? I think we have an obligation to go back out.
Yeah.
It's a little over, yeah, that's a good, that's a good point.
You know, it's, we're letting 2,130 people dictate what 15,000 people have at stake. And those people that have it at stake are our children, and we've got to do something. And I think we go back out.
Are we comfortable with the ballot language it's presented in with the renewals?
With the change that Guy had on there, it sounds, and if, and if they wanted to put in anything about a renewal in there, in the wording that we had talked about.
I think that's there.
Is it in there?
It's in the part that people don't read.
Yeah, I know.
You mean in all of it? I don't think people read it when they want to.
That's what I want to change is the box.
This is Eric. I've got another call that starts at 1:30. So, I've got 10 minutes, but I just wanted to flag that as this thing that people are dying to ask me along the way here. No, I think, maybe just one quick thing, Eric. I think we've talked about pushing back the bond refinance discussion till, when did we think I...
Well, we talked about after March, but now it's probably after May.
Yeah, so maybe May?
Okay.
Yeah. And we're going to deep dive into kind of taking a look at some, some of the levy discussions of, you know, are there some ways to try to drive down the, you know, the taxpayer costs, and knowing that there's some pushback there. So, we want to kind of just spend some time doing that work and come back and present some ideas and options, too. Okay. Thanks. Okay, thanks, Eric. Hey, I can stick around for another five. I just wanted to, you know, I was starting the clock.
So, essentially, we're needing motions on the supplemental and another motion separately for the plant, so.
Yeah, I move that we run the proposed ballot language as possibly modified by discussion today at 5.8 on the supplemental levy.
Second, I'm sorry. I thought you were...
He's kind of not quite tracking on hearing, but if I hear it right, if you make a motion to approve the supplemental with the addition of the up to...
Yes.
Then I think we're good to go. Although, I was also, are you maybe thinking of waiting a couple weeks?
No, no, no. So, the, the motion was to...
Yeah, if that, just make the motion, and we're good. I will just change it after the fact. So, just make it, make the motion with the addition of the up to language.
So, so just quick, Nick, the motion is really just to approve the ballot language as presented, is that correct?
That's fine, yeah, or the resolution as presented.
The resolution, okay.
So, the motion's been made by Mr. Calder, seconded by Mr. Jenkins. Is there any discussion?
Please repeat the motion.
Greg?
No.
So, if you can, I'll, I'll say...
It's nice of you to say please.
What?
So, let me start. I'll just say, we're, we'd ask the board to approve a, to approve the levy resolution for the supplemental levy.
5.8 million.
As presented with the, to be amended...
Talk about changes.
With the up to language.
Yeah, yeah, to be amended with the up to language. Let's try this again. So, I'll just go...
Okay, what I wrote was to approve supplemental levy renewal resolution as proposed.
Yeah, yeah. And I would just say...
Because we're presenting it with, so, yeah.
Greg's got to go. Can we, can we fix that? Because we need him here for a vote.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay. So, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and we would need a motion for the plant.
I would so move for the plant facility resolution as proposed.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Jenkins, seconded by Mr. Dance. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, just going back to what...
You're excused.
Thanks, Greg. Going back to what Paul was saying about numbers, so if we assume that 2,130 people are going to vote no, we've got to get 3,550 to vote yes.
For the plant?
For the, for the...
For any of them, yeah.
That's 60%.
To get 60%.
Different percentage, right?
Yeah.
I, I think we'll have to have a whole lot more than that, because I think there's going to be...
But I believe, but I believe if we, to rerun this at the same amount, we'll get some of these no's over to the yes column.
That's the hope. I think if there's increased clarity, it will, I imagine there's going to be more support for it.
All right. We need, is there any agenda items for upcoming meetings from admin or board?
Bond refinancing will be adjourned discussion, or late May?
Yeah, we'll let you know. We'll talk with Eric and see.
And then no on whatever Heath's telling you?
We'll just give you a quick offline discussion.
Okay, that sounds good. So, nothing for upcoming meetings? Okay. All right. We would need a motion to adjourn.
I so move. Oh, go ahead.
And I'll second it.
All right. So, been moved by Mr. Dance to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Jenkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, meeting adjourned.